saya sudah berhenti. saya ingin pergi dan mengeluarkan tanda tangan. Pemerintah Tepat diakui untuk mengeluarkan tanda tangan untuk anggota parlemen.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Norebel speaker, Tony Ali Pengalian Balindung. Kolig Sini Bangsa Moro Transition Authority.
Bangsa Moro Cabinet, Fellow Workers for Peace and Development, my fellow... ...of life including the lives of our people. Saya tahu sebagian besar dari kami sudah malu karena keadaan unik ini tahun ini. Tapi kami memanggil ini kepada masyarakat kami. Dan pengorbanan yang dilakukan oleh para pelayan kami di dalam perjuangan ini. Kami tidak dapat menahan kehormatan masyarakat kami dan jadi usaha kami terus berlanjut. Saya tahu sebagian besar dari kami sudah malu sekitar periode transisi. Saya bangga untuk mengatakan bahwa BTA sebagai pemerintah interim Bangsa Moro telah membuat pernyataan yang luar biasa sebagai pemerintah bagi masyarakat Bangsa Moro. Pernyataan seperti: Nomor 1, adopsi rencana transisi. Nomor 2, menerapkan hukum prioritas Bangsa Moro dan penciptaan ofis prioritas. Perkembangan bertahap dari pekerjaan dan provinsi untuk pengelolaan kesepakatan. Penciptaan proses pemasangan untuk pekerjaan. Perluasan layanan pemerintah. Kaitanannya antara pemerintah. Operasionalisasi agenda pemerintahan moral melalui pengumpulan pendapatan dan rekaman investasi tinggi, antara lain. Nomor 8, perpindahan Kota Batu City dan 68 varangais yang memilih untuk bergabung dengan BARM. Nomor 9, provinsi pendapatan internal untuk masyarakat non-eran sebelumnya. Nomor 10, responsansi COVID-19 efektif. Nomor 11, pembangunan kapasitas dan partnership strategis. Implementasi reform media dan perubahan perilaku yang berhubungan dengan agenda pemerintahan moral kami. Nomor 13, program banner centric orang. Ramdam ngang tao. Nomor 14, 13 hukum yang diterapkan oleh bangsa moro parlemen. Di sisi lain, Kaitanannya Antara Pemerintah, IGRB dikeluarkan oleh Sekretaris Carlos G. Dominguez untuk pemerintah nasional dan Pemerintah Mohajir Im Ikbal untuk pemerintah Bangsa Moro adalah partnership yang berharga. Sejak pertemuan pertimbangan pertama mereka, pada Desember 2019, IGRB telah bertemu 5 kali. Meskipun IGRB melakukan upaya maksimal untuk berkooperasi dan koordinasi serta memecahkan masalah dengan cara non-adversarial, kompleksitas masalah dan proses yang harus diobservasi sangat menekankan kemunculan waktu bergerak maju. Masalah selanjutnya masih dibahas di IGRB. Nomor 1, daerah hitam. Itu adalah transfer flow saat ini. Nomor 2, perpindahan agensi pemerintah nasional yang ditempatkan di Kota Batu untuk BARM. Nomor 3, program yang diperbayangkan secara nasional. Nomor 4, Kongres Filipina, bangsa moro parlemen. Nomor 5, penyebaran air Bangsa Moro. Nomor 6, penciptaan Komite Interagensi untuk Purposi Inventary. Penerbangan anggota MLF dan MLF ke polisi nasional Filipina. 8, Fund Development Special. Nomor 9, penciptaan kantor kawin regional di BARM. Nomor 10, penciptaan ofis BLGF. Nomor 11, partisipasi Bangsa Moro dalam pemerintahan nasional. Nomor 12, transfer manajemen dari reservi alam yang ada dan daerah yang terkejar. Nomor 13, transfer properti yang dimiliki dan dikontrol dan dimanfaatkan oleh ARMM luar wilayah pemerintah nasional. Nomor 14, transfer manajemen dari situs tempat perjalanan sejarah. Nomor 15, pengelolaan, pengembangan dan penggunaan bahan bensin dan uran fosil. Nomor 16, pengaturan Superbahaya Board untuk mempromosikan Bank Islam dan sistem keuangan Islam di BSP. Nomor 17, Infrastruktur Pemimpinan Antara Pemerintah. Nomor 18, Bangsa Moro Development Sustainable Board. 19, partisipasi dalam Islamic Investment Bank dan SPD. Nomor 20, program dan proyek pembangunan dan proyek di region Muslim Mindanao dan GOCC di region Muslim Mindanao. BTA juga, secara tentu, masih memiliki tugas yang banyak untuk dilakukan melalui periode transisi yang ditentukan oleh hukum pada Juni 2022. Untuk menyebutkan beberapa: Nomor 1, menerapkan hukum prioritas lainnya seperti Kode Kemanusiaan, Kodependidikan. the Civil Service Code, Education Code, Local Government Code, Revenue Code, Electoral Code, and Indigenous Peoples' Code. Number two, fully working and functional bureaucracy; number three, establish regional, local, intergovernmental relations body or the Council of Leaders; number four, determination of parliamentary districts; number five, clarify basis for computation of the annual black grant; number six, exercise of taxing powers and revenue generation; and number seven, transfer of powers, functions, assets, personnel, and funds of concerned national government agencies to BARMM. The challenges that the BTA now faces in carefully navigating the transition period are daunting. The transitional environment sets some limitations in instituting changes and reforms in the BARM such as: number one, the short period of transition provided in the Bangsamoro Organic Law. Studies conducted on peace processes all over the world recommend a six to 10 years of transition period for a post-conflict government to be fully effective and operational. Number two, setting up a parliamentary form of government under a unitary system. The transition involves not merely a change of name from ARMM to BARMM. There are institutional and political changes that must be put in place as we transform into a parliamentary ministerial system envisioned to be more responsive to the realities of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region. This is the first of its kind in the Philippines. Number three, implementation of the provisions of the Bangsamoro Organic Law. Most of the time-bound provisions of the law have not been implemented even after one year and nine months of the BARM's establishment. Those are still under discussion at the IGRB level. The powers and authorities granted by the Bangsamoro Organic Law to the BARM are not absolutely given. Irregular mode of transfer of annual black grant. The Bangsamoro Organic Law unequivocally states that the black grant shall be released without need of any further action, directly and comprehensively to Bangsamoro government and shall not be subject to any holdback that may be imposed the national government for whatever purpose. Such is not being observed for 2020 as the blank grant is transferred monthly instead of comprehensively. Number five, institution building and staffing. In its bid to ingrain moral governance during the transition period, the BTA opened the application process for job vacancies in the BARM to all qualified candidates through the Bangsamoro Job Portal. This proved to be helpful and overwhelming. Helpful because it reads of the ears of political patronage and overwhelming because of the volume of applications, 315,344 applications for 4,500 positions posted, received region-wide. The amount of time and resources spent in going through the applications admittedly contributes to the delay in the hiring process in the BARM. Number six, COVID-19. The pandemic situation has enormously affected government services, the economy, and the world as we know it. As with others, it forced the Bangsamoro government to redirect its priorities, which eventually halted implementation of key programs and projects in the BARM for 2020. Most importantly, it is worthy to emphasize that despite the legal process of enacting the Bangsamoro Organic Law, the base documents remain to be the framework agreement on the Bangsamoro and the comprehensive agreement on the Bangsamoro. In particular, the implementation of the Annex on Normalization provisions of the peace agreement is still a work in progress. There are eight interrelated components of normalization, namely, creation of the transitional component of normalization, a joint normalization committee or GNC, joint peace and security committee, GPSC, and joint peace and security teams, GPST; and two socioeconomic development program; three confidence building measures such as pardon and amnesty as well as special programs for the six acknowledged scamps of the MLF; and four, the commissioning of MLF weapons and combatants; five, redeployment of armed forces of the Philippines in the Bangsamoro; number six, policing in the Bangsamoro; number seven, disbending of private armed groups; and number eight, transitional justice and reconciliation program. As of the moment, there is a slow progress in the implementation of the components of the normalization for the following reasons: number one, normalization is a process which follows a sequence. One cannot proceed without the conclusion of the other. Implementation is usually preceded by a term of preference and is done by phases. Number two, we must carefully implement the normalization provision with the aim of achieving a smooth transition for MLF combatants to productive civilian life and, more importantly, attaining peace, justice, and development in the region. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, there is a limited movement of peace workers as well as international peace partners who undertake monitoring of implementation. Practically, we lost a year from the three-year transition period which we could have utilized to implement the normalization process as well as the BOL. We expect that the effects of the pandemic will last for a longer time. Funds are scarce. The commissioning 40,000 MLF combatants would entail around 40 billion from the national government in the form of cash, socioeconomic package, and housing facilities. Due to the pandemic, the national government is also reeling from shortage of funds needed to run the government and provide funds for its programs and projects nationwide, launching those of the normalization process. Number five, substantial implementation of all the components of the normalization process is not only the responsibility of the GPH and MLF, but all stakeholders, including Congress of the Philippines through legislation and providing ample funds for normalization. Along this exhaustive list and reasons where the recommendation to extend the transition period until 2025 are rooted. As initially proposed by the various civil society organizations who continue to bear our critical partners for peace and development in the Bangsamoro, the extension is necessary so that the BTA is afforded sufficient time within which to satisfactorily accomplish its tasks and commitments under the Bangsamoro Organic Law and for the national government to deliver the pending programs under the normalization process. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, we are all aware that for the past few weeks, the conversation in the Bangsamoro circled around the call for extending the transition period. Allow me to take this opportunity to share important updates towards this end. On November 23, 2020, I, together with some members of the cabinet, met the President, President Rodrigo Rua Duterte in Davao City to update the president about the progress of our work here in the BTA, the challenges we face and opportunities we see as we fulfill our mandate entrusted to us. We also took this opportunity to relate pertinent issues on the normalization process as I have mentioned earlier. The idea is to discuss ways forward that would ensure the success of not only the BTA transition period but also of the Bangsamoro peace process. As a true son of Mindanao and to some extent the Bangsamoro himself, President Duterte acknowledges that the transition period is too short to begin with and he understands the profound reasons behind the call for extending the transition period. Needless to see, however, this would entail amendments to RA 11054 and as such, an act of Congress is imperative. Shortly after the meeting with the president, we meet with Senator Zubiri, the champion of the BOL in the Senate to have essentially the same conversation and hopefully to start the legislative process in the upper house. As expected, the good majority floor leader was also very supportive for the bill extending the transition period. He even initially promised to sponsor this important legislation. Two weeks ago, our team met the leadership of the House of Representatives. We meet Speaker Lord Alan Vilasco, Majority Floor Leader Martin Romualdes, and Minority Floor Leader Joseph Stepan Paduano. All expressed their support and as a testament to this, the House already created a joint committee to deliberate this important legislation. As we speak, there are now four House bills filed in the lower house. House Bill 8116 by Representative Lauren Ligarda; House Bill 8117 by Representative Smile22 Mamudadato; House Bill 8161 by Majority Floor Leader Martin Romualdes; and House Bill 8222 by Representative Khalid Dimapuro. Several representatives have likewise co-authored the bills and we are expecting that many more will do the same. Mr. Speaker and their colleagues, we also have separate meetings with Senate President Tito Soto and Senator Tolentino, Senator Pimentel, Senator Zubiri, Senator Angara, and Senator Grace Poehl. The discussions were very fruitful and many expressed intentions to be co-authors once the equivalent bill is sponsored in the Senate upon its resumption next year. We are aware that there are concerns from some local chief executives. We respect and heard their opinions. After all, this is part of our democracy. In keeping with our call for moral governance, there is a continuing engagement with them and with other key stakeholders to address their concerns and promote mutual understanding and cooperation. Our initial engagement showed promising result and I am confident that together we will be able to move as one for the sake of the Bangsamoro. With several bills filed at Congress and the unwavering support of His Excellency President Rodrigo Rua Duterte and his cabinet, we are optimistic that we can push through this important goal. Not for the president, not for the MLF, not for the BTA, but for everyone in the Bangsamoro who believes in lasting peace and development. My dear brothers and sisters, I thank you for joining us in this dream and for tirelessly representing our people and their hopes. We have come a long way, but the road is still a long way to go. We cannot and we must not stop until we build a government reflective of our sacrifices, history, and proud future for those who will follow, Insa Allah. Thank you so much and wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. The show is suspended for a minute.
General Inspector Provisions applicable thereto until December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one. The appropriations for personal services authorized in this act shall be valid for obligation and disbursement until December thirty-one, twenty-twenty. The MFBM is authorized to issue the necessary guidelines for the effective implementation of this act, recommending its approval with amendments signed by the Chairperson and members of the Committee on Finance, Mister Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I now open the floor for the period of... Uh, sorry, Mister Speaker. I move to adopt the Committee Report number fifty-two, Mister Speaker.
There is a move to adopt the Committee Report. It's been seconded and no objection. The same is hereby adopted for deliberation.
Mister Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation in the...
The period of interpolation is now open. Those who have any questions as to the Committee Report.
Mister Speaker, I move to, since there is no member of the BTA, I move to close the period of interpolation.
The period of interpolation is now terminated as far as Committee Report number fifty-two is concerned.
Yes, Mister Speaker, I move to open the period of amendment.
The period of amendments to Committee Report number fifty-two is now open. The gentleman from...
May we respectfully recognize MP Zia Lontao, Mister Speaker.
Ramain is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, part of the justification of extending the utilization of the unutilized funds is because of the continuity of the programs and as well as to make it available readily. Mister Chair, I would like to request the proponent of this measure to, that my proposal, Mister Chair, is to amend Section Three on the Effectivity, Mister Chair. That instead of the fifteen-day effectivity upon its publication, I would like Mister Speaker to propose that it should be January one because the urgency of the utilization of these funds would also depend on the readily available funding for utilization, Mister Chair. So if I may ask Mister Chair, the Secretary to Page Flash, Section Three of this proposed act, the Effectivity Clause, Mister Chair. Based, Mister Chair, there is already a ruling on the Supreme Court regarding the Effectivity Clause. I would cite to you, Mister Chair, Tanyada versus Tobera. We make sure, Mister Chair, that the effectivity of this act shall be automatically, it should be sooner than what is stipulated originally in the draft. So I would, Mister Chair, move that instead of fifteen-day, I would move that this act shall take effect on January one, Mister Speaker. If the proponent wishes, is amendable, Mister Chair, to this proposal?
The proponent is required to answer the proposed amendment?
Yes, Mister Chair, continuing, considering that there is a need to, for the continuity of the availability of the appropriations for twenty-twenty, then I agree with the proposal that instead of Section Three as reflected, it be made effective January one, twenty-twenty-one, subject to style, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker.
Yes, MP Maizara, is that related to the...
Yes, Mister Speaker. I support the motion to amend. However, according to the doctrine in Tanyada versus Tobera, the Supreme Court said that the publication is an indispensable requirement for the validity of the law. Therefore, Mister Speaker, though we may shorten the time for its effectiveness to less than the fifteen-day period, we cannot do away with the publication requirement because that will be violative of due process of law. Every law should be published, Mister Speaker, except if it's internal. That is the doctrine enunciated in Tanyada versus Tobera.
Truly noted.
Mister Chair.
I think, yeah, the, yeah.
Mister Chair, may I, Mister Chair, may I explain, Mister Chair, further my position on this? I do not assume, Mister Chair, to argue further on the appreciation of this particular jurisprudence cited by the Supreme Court. Although the publication really, the proposal does not really preclude the publication. In fact, as soon as we done and adopt this proposed amendment to the PAA, extending the utilization, it would immediately be published. And the publication would only indicate the effectivity of the availability of these funds. So as far as publication is concerned, it will be published citing January one as the effectivity of the availability of these funds, Mister Chair. For continuity and to make sure that the urgency of these programs is well-served, Mister Chair. Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker. May we know the exact, may we get the exact proposed amendment of the honorable gentleman Pramramain so that we will know what language he is proposing so that we will reflect that the publication is also there in the law that we are trying to enact, Mister Speaker?
Yes, thank you very much for that, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, my proposal, Mister Speaker, is to cite specific the date, January one, twenty-twenty-one, Mister Speaker. Effectivity.
How about the publication reform?
Mister Speaker, that would, I confirm, Mister Speaker, with the Deputy Minister of MFBM. As soon as we enacted this amendment or this law, immediately they will publish, Mister Speaker, the approve, the enactment of this proposed extension of utilization of funds, Mister Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, the proposed amendment of MP Zia is to provide the exact date, January one, twenty-twenty, but if I read it, this act shall take effect on January one, two thousand twenty-one after its publication in the newspaper.
One minute. Yes, duly noted.
The requirements of publication is...
One-minute suspension.
Am I in my...
Mister Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader, I will recognize MP Zia Adyong.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I would like to propose further amendment on my original proposal. The Effectivity, Section Three. This law shall be effective on January one, twenty-twenty-one after its publication in a newspaper or of circular, of regional circulation, Mister Speaker. There.
Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I will submit my proposal, Mister Speaker, of my proposed amendment. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
MP Maizara.
Mister Speaker, January one is a legal holiday, Mister Speaker. So, you know, when we propose amendments, we make sure that it falls within the parameters of legality, at least semblance of it. But unfortunately, I don't see any wisdom in making a legal holiday the effectivity as well, Mister Speaker, considering that if it's a legal holiday, do you think anybody will be going to the publication to publish this, Mister Speaker? And for a fact, that why are we doing away with the fifteen-days complete publication in the newspaper of general circulation? That is the safest route for a legal effectivity or publication requirement. Why are we doing away with that? The problem with this proposition, Mister Speaker, is we might be questioning the future for this kind of effectivity clause.
Mister Speaker, again, I don't have the exact, it's in the, it's in Civil Code, Civil Service Code. I don't have the exact, but Mister Speaker, I would just like to expound my position on this. Yeah, I agree with the observation of MP Lamtamalatif that it is an illegal holiday. But this act, Mister Speaker, does not propose for a new utilization or a new implementation of a particular program. It can be retroactively because we're talking about the unused and utilized funds. Meaning to say, by January one, it can already be considered available, retroactive because it's retro, the effect of this law, Mister Speaker, is retroactive, the unused funds on the utilized funds. So I do sympathize and I do agree with the position of MP Maizara Latif. Although, the very nature of why we're extending this, we're enacting this law is to extend the utilization of the PAA twenty-twenty, unutilized and unused funds, Mister Speaker. It is not something that we have proposed for, for a budget that would have, that is identified or indicated as something new, Mister Speaker.
Yeah, may I hear a vice-chair of the Committee on Finance on this matter?
May I, Mister Speaker, may I request, Mister Speaker, that the proponent of this measure be also supply specific answers to the legal dilemma that is now being presented by MP Latif. So far as the legal holiday is concerned. May I request, Mister Speaker, that MP Vice be also allowed, be allowed, Mister Speaker?
Before him, I will recognize MP Paixalintago. I think we will get the wisdom of the senior lawyers in the BTA. Seniority as a compliment.
Do not pronounce a senior citizen. Probably senior lawyer, Mister Speaker, but not senior citizen.
Senior lawyer.
Not just senior citizen. This is to reconcile both the ideas of my colleague, Mister Speaker. If I can suggest, Mister Speaker, that we should not quote January one. If I can suggest, this bill shall take effect immediately, a day upon its publication. Because the issue in the Tobera case is the publication requirement. That's why the Supreme Court declared all the laws issued by Marcos then declared by the Supreme Court illegal or null and void because of the publication requirement. Now, my reconciling version, Mister Speaker, is this bill or this law shall take effect immediately upon its publication or already upon its publication. That's my suggestion, if my colleagues will agree with me.
Because the suggestion...
Wag nang sabi niung January one. Because when it can be published, wag nang sabi niung January...
Mister Speaker. Question of MP Paixaray that the fifteen-day publication can be dispensed with, not the publication. Mister Speaker. Proposal of MP Tago is sound and it adopts both positions of the... Yes, MP Vice.
Mister Speaker Nabiltan.
MP Nabiltan, organized.
Thank you. I support that statement of the senior lawyer. in the BTA, uh, present, uh, MP Paisalin Tago. Not to put a definitive, uh, date because you'll never know, nobody will also transact with you. Everybody is on holiday. Uh, you cannot do transaction during holidays, uh, a day after its publication so that you will be safe. Because this is a budget bill, regardless of whether or not, uh, extended, it's still a budget bill. And we should be very, very careful. I support the suggested compromise if the, if the proponents of the amendments, uh, will listen to the senior lawyer and my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker.
I now recognize MP Byes.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, uh, as the proponent, Mr. Speaker, of this particular amendment, I, I am listening to the veteran lawyers. I am listening to the elders, I am listening to the senior lawyers. I'm even listening to female lawyers of this parliament. I'm listening to everyone because this is in fact a deliberative body. I will, I am amenable to the suggestion of the senior veteran lawyer of, uh, MP Paisalin Tago on that specific amendment, Mr. Chair. And I hope MP Maysara Dambdaman Latif could also, uh, be amenable to that as a compromise.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
May, may I, uh, MP Maysara, may I please recognize MP Byes Pakasen first before I recognize you? MP Byes being the proponent.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, may I, uh, hear again the, uh, proposed wordings of the, uh, Goodman from Nau del Sur, uh, Mr. Speaker? The revised, uh, wordings of the proposal, Mr. Chair.
MP Tago, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you, thank you. And I have body cohere and my guide. Mr. Speaker, the, the, on the Effectivity Clause, Section Three of the proposed Act, this act shall take effect immediately upon its public- publication in the newspaper of regional circulation, not general circulation.
Any, any further?
Mr. Speaker, point of clarification, Mr. Speaker, from MP Alomia.
May I please recognize MP Byes first? MP Byes, what is yours?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I am accepting the, uh, proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I wa- I believe that I have still the floor after MP Byes.
Yeah, MP Maysara.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, upon, uh, check, upon the manifest motion to amend the amendment by, uh, MP Tago of the Gentleman from Taraka, I am amenable to the language that was proposed, that the law shall, the act shall take effect immediately after its publication in the newspaper of regional circulation in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, Mr. Speaker. And, uh, I believe that, uh, being female or male is not the matter, is not essential. It is the law, it is all about the law. So gender is not the one that should be prevailing here, nor the age or seniority of lawyers. But the reasoning behind the law as enunciated by our Supreme Court should be the one that should prevail, not about gender, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, duly note, MP Maysara, the wording, the wording is immediately upon its publication. Do you, do you agree?
After its publication, Mr. Speaker, after its publication.
Mrs. Speaker.
Point clarification, Mr. Speaker, if I may?
Yes. If I may, if I may, if I may.
I think, no, uh, MP.
Just a short manifestation, Mr. Speaker. The reason, this is my, my, my response earlier, Mr. Speaker, because I've mentioned about gender and jet.
Oh, yeah, the MP Zia you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The reason why I cited that, it's not really to segregate the membership based on gender or age. It is to show the inclusivity of the deliberative body, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Duly noted, MP, the Minority Floor Leader is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a, a clarificatory question to the proponent, uh, who has changed the, um, language of the initial proposed amendment, Mr. Chair. The, this bill is Bill Number, uh, Seventy-Six, which, uh, has been approved by the Committee on Finance, extending, uh, amending Section Forty-Seven of the BAA Act Twenty Twenty, uh, BAA Act Number Three, which resp- uh, which pertains to the Bangsa Moro Appropriations Act of Twenty Twenty. Section Forty-Seven is amended extending it. Now, the question is, what is being, uh, added to the amendment is Section Three of the previous of BAA, of the Bangsa Moro Appropriations Act Twenty Twenty, which pertains to the effectivity of that particular law, not the current, uh, bill that is, uh, amending Section Forty-Seven only. So are we amending Section Three of BAA Number Zero Three pertaining to the Appropriations Act Twenty Twenty? Or are we going to introduce a new section in this particular bill extending the effect, the validity of the budget up to the end of twenty twenty-one? Because if we are amending Section Three as proposed by MP Zia Alonto Adyong pertaining to the BAA Twenty Twenty, then we have, if we put a date or if we remove the fifteen day requirement for publication, then we have moved the effectivity of the budget. Yeah, it will be, um, it's, there is a, there is an incongruence, uh, Mr. Speaker.
I think this is an entirely new law. This is not just an amendment of the, of the, uh, Bangsa Moro, uh, uh, Appropriations Act of Twenty Twenty.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that's why I would like to clarify because, uh, uh, MP Adyong mentioned Section Three. Is that Section Three of the previous law, Twenty Twenty? Or is that Section Three of Bill Number, BTA Bill Number Seventy-Six?
I, I apologize if I caused confusion on the, uh, Majority Leader. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, again, what I propose is an amendment to Cabinet Bill Number, uh, Seventy-Six, which is now being the subject matter of this, uh, body. So I am proposing an amendment to Section Three of the bill and an act extend, extending the availability of the Twenty Twenty Bangsa Moro, uh, budget, Mr. Speaker. Not the previous law.
Are you clarified now, uh, Minority Floor Leader?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Which, may I be very specific, which Section Three of the bill? Because the se- the Bill Number Seventy-Six talks only about Section Forty-Seven. Section Forty-Seven, uh, amending Section Forty-Seven of the old law, the Twenty Twenty BAA. So which Section Three are we referring to? Because if, if it pertains to the law that is being amended now, which is BAA Twenty Twenty, we are extending its validity, then we should no longer touch Section Three of the original BAA Twenty Twenty and retain the wordings there, which requires the fifteen day publication, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Speaker. Uh, we are proposing to amend Section Three of Cabinet Bill Number Seventy-Six. I understand that the confusion, Mr. Speaker, that there are three sections uh, under Cabinet Bill Number Seventy-Six. What the good Minority Leader is referring to is Section One, which talks about Section Forty-Seven of the cash budgeting system, uh, of the previous BAA. In the cabinet bill that we are proposing now, there are three sections. Section One, which talk about Section Forty-Seven of the Bangsa Moro Appropriations Act. Section Two, which talks about the repealing clause of this proposed, uh, act and Section Three, the effectivity of this proposed, uh, cabinet bill number Seventy-Six, Mr. Speaker. I hope I am clear on, clear on this, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, uh, if I may finish, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, you may, you may finish.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Considering that, Mr. Speaker, then I go, um, I, I second the, uh, motion, the, the recommendation of MP Maysara Latif that we retain the fifteen day requirement for publication. Anyway, immediately after the fifteen day publication, this law will take effect, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Speaker, that is my stand, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Chair, Madam Minority Floor Leader, the ma- the position of the, uh, of MP Sara is to, uh, immediately, uh, I, I mean, for this bill, uh, for this law to be immediately effective upon, after its publication in newspaper of general circulation. General circ- uh, yeah, the general circulation and the fifteen day requirement is dispensed with.
Mrs. Speaker, oh, Mrs. Speaker, we both agree, Mrs. Speaker, the urgency of this act. We both agree that there's a need for the continuity of the budget to be implemented. We both agree that part of the reason why we need to enact this is the urgency, the availability of the funds. I don't think there's a, there's a, really a difference between the interpretation of how effective and how available it is, Mrs. Speaker.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
May I recognize MP Bai Intan first, uh, MP Nabiltan?
Mr. Chairman, yes, yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I hope this will not, uh, add confusion to the already confused provisions. Um, Mr. Chair, based on the committee report, uh, which I am a vice chair, um, it says here that there are three pages of the committee report. And, uh, the page one, which is the latest version, uh, talks only about the, uh, capital outlay and the PS as the subject of the extension. And it didn't, uh, talk about anymore the Section Two and Section Three unless, um, Section Forty-Seven is the Section One because it doesn't say here that it's, it's the Section One, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker. So, Mr. Speaker, we need to clarify this because we are talking about two documents, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension.
That's why there is a confusion. Which document are we talking about?
I will listen to the, we will listen to the explanation of the proponent. I think, uh, everybody should settle down. Clear decision of proponent that we are amending the proposed bill at the law, the Bangsa Moro Appropriation Law. What is cited there, the, the, the provisions there are the provisions in the old law, but we are not amending them, diba? Sige, uh, you may now proceed.
Okay, uh, yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, the original draft bill is composed of three sections only. The Section One, which intends to, uh, amend Section Forty-Seven of our appropriations for Twenty Twenty. And then, uh, Section Two refers to the repealing clause and the Section Three refers to the effectivity. So there was a original draft, which was submitted and referred to the committee. At the committee level, there was, uh, there was an amendment on Section One of, uh, our, uh, draft, uh, Bill Number Seventy-Six. And that, uh, amendment is what was just presented. So hindi na hunating sinama doon sa buang report kung ano 'yung hindi na amend na provision ng draft bill, which are the Sections Two and Three of the, uh, Bill Number Seventy-Six, Mr. Speaker.
So it is clear now?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for clarifying, but that is not my point, Mr. Speaker. I have proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
You have proposed amendment to the, we will tackle that today.
Yes.
Okay, uh.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, MP Maysara, are you clarified?
Can you, yes, can, uh, can we first go to, back to the Effectivity Clause so that we will close this issue once and for all?
Yes.
I am amenable to the proposed amendment of the Honorable MP Tago, uh, only, only because that is what is, the law requires a publication. But it should be not upon, the word should be after its publication, Mr. Speaker.
I agree.
Uh, I accept, Mr. Speaker.
The proponent accepts it. So Secretariat, please indicate, uh, instead of upon, it should be after its publication. Uh, MP Nabiltan, you were, uh, signifying to speak?
Hindi na po, maliwanat pa sa araw ang ano. Ang usapan na, umahaba lang, basta 'yung publication is indispensable.
Yes. Uh, MP, may I recognize now the lady from Magindanao, MP Bayitan, what is your proposed amendment?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Full disclosure, I am a member of, no, I'm not actually the member, I'm the vice chair of the subcommittee. But, Mr. Speaker, upon looking at the title, Mr. Speaker, of the proposed, uh, amendment by the committee, uh, Mr. Speaker, my proposal is, since the, uh, the content of the bill talks about the, uh, extending the validity of the MOOE and the capital outlay only and not the PS, the personal services, Mr. Speaker. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, is to include in the title. And may I read, Mr. Speaker? An act extending the availability of the Twenty Twenty Bangsa Moro Appropriations to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, except personal services. And, uh, amending further blah, blah, blah until, uh, Twenty Twenty. Because, Mr. Speaker, we are not amending the PS component, Mr. Speaker, and therefore we should need to reflect it in the title to be consistent with the body of the resolution, Mr. Speaker, of the bill, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Duly noted, what is the pleasure?
Uh, I accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much for the, uh, for the acceptance of my proposed amendment.
Is that a, is that a proposed amendment, uh, MP Sankey?
This is just a clarification, Mr. Speaker, can I be recognized?
Yes, make, please make it very brief.
Uh, yes, I just would like to share some idea or some thoughts on budgeting. The Effectivity Provision on the budgeting should be guided by the nature or kind of budget we have. I, my understanding is that we have what we call itemized budget and performance budget. Now, when we talk of, uh, PS or personal services and, uh, maintenance other operating spaces and capital outlay, I, I think there's nothing wrong with the, the way as presented by the proponent to approve this budget without taking, uh, the fifteen days' effectivity when it will be published as a problem. I don't see any problem about it. Why, why we are making so much problem out of the budget when there are two kinds of budget? Performance budget and itemized budget. For, uh, personal services, that is itemized budget. Performance budget may refer to other expenditures pertaining to MOEE, capital outlay, infrastructure project and lab do project. There's nothing wrong about the effectivity when, once we have approved this thing.
Duly noted, sir. Uh, I think that should be answered by, uh.
There are two kinds of budget. There are two kinds of budget, itemized budget and performance budget. And I think I, we have re- thoroughly reviewed the justification of the proponent in its, uh, committee report. In fact, I have some reservation, but by, when I reviewed the second report, I found out that the budget is, uh, okay sa aking pananaw.
Thank you, sir. Uh, MP, uh, who will answer, MP Anna Basma?
I, I just want to put that on record, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Oh, jule noted, jule noted.
There are two kinds of budget, performance budget and itemized budget.
Jule noted, MP Sangki.
May we recognize MP Anna Basma?
The lady from Lano del Sur is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. While I am a member of the Committee on Finance and, uh, I heavily participated in the deliberations of this, uh, subject bill last night, uh, I just, uh, there is just some, uh, styling issue on the, uh, phraseology of section forty-seven, which is section one of this bill. So, if you may just delete the first mention of authorized in this act in section one, so section forty-seven should read. It should read, uh, cash budgeting system, all appropriations for maintenance and other operating expenses and capital outlay authorized in this act. So, deleting authorized in this act, uh, in its first mention. That is all, Mr. Speaker.
Jule noted. Any other amendments?
No, Mr. Speaker.
Clarificatory muna, Mr. Speaker. Yeah, what is your clarificatory question?
Uh, it says here, Mr. Speaker, that all special provisions, uh, and general provisions will still be applicable. So, that means uh, from section two to section seventy-one, uh, they're all applicable and also the special provisions.
Uh, what is the answer of the, uh, proponent on the question as to the applicability of, uh, the extension from second? Uh, please repeat your clarificatory question.
Uh, it says here in section forty-seven, uh, Mr. Speaker, that under the same general and special provisions applicable thereto until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. So, uh, we have here in our old law, the B A twenty twenty, is section two until section seventy-one. Because we're amending actually the effectiveness clause, then the section one, all the, all the special provisions there, they're still applicable.
What is the answer of the proponent?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, the general and special provisions, uh, as originally reflected in the PAA twenty twenty is still, uh, retained, Mr. Speaker.
No amendments, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much. The, I, I saw-
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, I also accept the, uh, proposal of the lady from Lano del Sur, Mr. Speaker, with regards to section one's, uh, amendment, Mr. Speaker.
I saw the hands of veteran lawyer MP Taggo. What is your proposal, MP Taggo? So, if there are no more amendments, Mr. Speaker?
I move to close the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to close the period of amendments. It's been seconded. There being no objection, the same is hereby, uh, approved.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, since we already, uh, completed the, uh, period of amendments, Mr. Speaker, I move to, uh, for the approval of the Cabinet Bill number fifty, uh, seventy-six on second reading by Viva Boche, Mr. Speaker.
May I direct, may I, we are now moving to divide the house by Viva Boche? Uh,
Mr. Speaker.
May I please ask the Secretary General to read the title of, uh, the, of BTA Bill number seventy-six?
Sir Speaker, on Cabinet Bill number being authored by the government of the day is entitled, uh, an act extending the availability of the twenty twenty Bangsa Moro appropriations to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, amending for the purpose section forty-seven of the general provisions of the Bangsa Moro autonomy act number three, the Bangsa Moro appropriations act of fiscal year twenty twenty. Sir Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
My earlier amendment was, uh, who, uh, that was accepted by the proponent was not reflected in the final.
Yes, I think we, we still have to move for the approval of the committee report. Hindi na ba tayo mag-aapprove?
No, uh, we should have, uh, approve it prior to the discussion.
Okay, uh, those who are in favor.
Uh, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is, this is a title which reflects the amendments on the title.
Yes, we will just state it here in the voting. Those who are in favor of BTA Bill number seventy-six as amended in plenary, say aye. Aye. Are aye, are nay. Say nay. The ayes have it. The BTA Bill number seventy-six is approved on second, uh, reading.
Mr. Speaker, may we request the secretary to produce copy of the cabinet bill so that we can produce, we can proceed to the third reading, Mr. Speaker, considering that this has been certified as urgent, Mr. Speaker. Yes. The, 'yung tapin muna, uh, copy, printed copy of the bill.
Yes, the, the Secretary General is directed to produce, uh, printed copies of the third of the, of the, uh, approved bill on second reading.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Kahit ang copy lang. One minute, one minute suspension. Session resumed. This will be a working, uh, session?
This MP, uh, Bayintan and Patuan.
Bayintan, uh, MP Bayintan, you are recognized.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the final comment that, that was given to us, Mr. Speaker, um, bears that, uh, the principal author is the government of the day. I, I compare it to the Ministry of Finance Deputy Minister. And, uh, I also want to seek the wisdom of the parliament uh, because, uh, this has come to the, ano, uh, amendments of the Committee on Finance, Mr. Chair, and who is supposed to be the, the author now, Mr. Speaker? Uh, because, uh, that will bear in the final, uh, document that we should be adapting.
What is the perspective of the Majority Floor Leader in the matter?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the, the observation of MP, uh, uh, Bayintan and Patuan is, uh, very well noted, Mr. Speaker, because, but, uh, but the, uh, subject matter of the voting, Mr. Speaker, is the content of the, uh, law, the title and all sections one, two, three, Mr. Speaker. Then in the copy, printed copy that was given to us, Mr. Speaker, is the uh, copy, uh, final copy of the, uh, the title, the sections, uh, below, Mr. Speaker. And that will substantially comply, Mr. Speaker, the, the requirement of the, uh, in passing law, Mr. Speaker.
Are you clarified, MP Bayintan?
But nevertheless, MP Bayintan will be giving her a copy of the, uh,
I think we, we should wait for the, it's just a one-page, uh, document, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I think the secretariat is already printing it.
Mr. Speaker.
But nevertheless, we can comply that, Mr. Speaker.
So, we, we, what, 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 what is the pleasure of MP Bayintan here?
Uh, we'll wait for the final copy, Mr. Chair, because that's the one we will be, uh, voting.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker. In, you are recognized. Mr. Speaker, am I recognized?
Yes, you are recognized.
May we move to suspe- I move to suspend the session until, uh, for fifteen minutes.
Session is suspended for fifteen minutes. Majority Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, since all the members of the BTA Parliament have received the printed copies of the Cabinet Bill Number 76 and has already been approved on second reading. And there is a certification that such bill is an urgent bill. It was received by the BTA Parliament on December 70, 2020, to the Office of the Speaker. So therefore, Mr. Speaker, I move for the third and final approval of BTA Cabinet Bill Number 76 by nominal voting, Mr. Speaker.
Are there already printed final copies of the proposed Bill Number 76? Secretary General. I'll meet with Sam Bayang.
Okay.
Okay. We will now proceed to the division of the House and vote to approve BTA Bill Number 76. Yeah, by nominal voting.
Bakit division of the House? Wala na objection.
No, by nominal voting, I'm sorry. By nominal voting. May I request the Secretariat to please read the title of BTA Bill Number 76 as amended?
Yeah, here I will give you the text. One, two, three, four, five.
Can I move for one-minute suspension?
One-minute suspension. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the... I'm sorry. Session resumes. Secretary General is directed to read the title of BTA Bill Number 76 and proceed to nominal voting.
Mr. Speaker, Parliament Bill Number 76, being authored by the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management, is entitled "An Act Extending the Availability of the 2020 Bangsa Muro Appropriations", September 31, 2021, Except Personal Services, Amending for the purpose section 47 of the General Provisions of the Bangsa Muro Autonomy Act Number 3, the Bangsa Muro Appropriations Act of Fiscal Year 2020, Mr. Speaker.
Nominal voting for BTA Cabinet Bill Number 76. Abbas Ahmad. Abbas Haron.
Yes, vote.
Abbasul Kenei. Abbas Basid Sarit. Abu Mujib. Adiyon Jaur Rahman Alonto. Ahang Abdullah. Alavia Liza.
My vote is yes.
Ali Junior Lanang. Ali Edi Kapak.
Yes.
Alil Sesar. Apulotos Huarto. Apatuan Baintan.
Mr. Speaker, can I just add one last favor? Mr. Speaker, I supported this particular bill in recognition of the losses of time due to COVID and the adjustments that are being done at the institutional level because we are still organizing the bureaucracy of the Bangsa Muro Government. My vote is yes.
Anayatin Susana. Asmaul Muslimah. Balidog Ali Pangalian. Amin Aminudin Barah. Basman Anna Tarhata. Batoh Muhammad Jaynuddin.
Voting yes.
Urahan Abraham.
Yes.
Andaw Bai Maleha.
Yes.
Dandamun Latif Maishara.
Yes.
Diablo Musa.
Yes. Yes.
Dipatuan Saprula.
Yes.
Ibrahim Ahod. Ismail Haji Abdullah Sis. Gayak Abdullah. Gera Edward. Hassan Hatimil. Hasim Abdullah.
Yes.
Iqbal Muagir. Ismail Rasul. Dajuri Raisa. Jakilan Muslimin. Karon Baynon. Lidasan Mussolini.
I vote yes.
Loong Don Mustafa. Lorena Jose Ribani. Makaku Abdurrahman.
Of the minority? Yes. Then I will go for it. My vote, yes.
Makapaar Abdullah. Makaraya Jamel. Makasalong Marjani. Mangudatudatukadave. Mantawilmalik. Mastura Datutukau. Mastura Siti Syahara. Mualil Amir Bahar.
Mr. Speaker, I hope that the programs and projects that will be funded by this extended budget will lead down to the benefit of our people, the Bangsa Muro people. My vote is yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mit Timbang Datu Mit Pantau. Mit Mong Rasul. Kujahid Abdul Mohmin.
Mr. Speaker. I vote yes, Mr. Speaker.
Bunios Hussein. Urano Swayd. Asem Ubaidah. Pak Abdullah Haap. Pangandaman Nabila Margarita.
I vote yes.
Ramos Diavila. Ripang Edrisa Nasir. Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Ang buto ko po para po sa mamaya ng Bangsa Muro, para po sa atin lahat ni Miropalamin, yes na yes po, alhamdulillah po, insya Allah. Sakarmu Dayaw. Sahri Abdul. Salenat Saed. Tali Al Sayyid. Saliga Romeo. Salik Ali. Sanki Ali. Tani Punduma. Sakar Asad.
I vote yes.
Demao Baryasir. Zemar Romeo. Jake Saed.
I vote yes, assalamualaikum.
Silongan Aida. Sulaiman Ali. Tagopay Salid. Tago Paisalid. Tan Nabil.
Mr. Speaker, considering that this is intended to support our all our ministries, I hope that the hiring will be fast track so the implementation of programs will not be delayed. So my vote is yes, thank you.
Ujjah Shahi. Ulama Meladio. Usman Asfar. Yakob Muhammad. UK Narciso.
Mr. Speaker, we have now the result of the nominal voting on the Parliament Bill Number 76. We have 48 members of the parliament voted for yes with zero no votes and zero abstained, Mr. Speaker. So therefore, the yes votes have been, Mr. Speaker.
With 48 voting in favor, zero abstention and zero no votes, BTA Bill Number 76 entitled: "An Act Extending the Availability of the 2020 Bangsa Muro Appropriations to December 31, 2021, Except Personal Services, amending for that purpose section 47 of the General Provisions of the Bangsa Muro Autonomy Act Number 03, the Bangsa Muro Appropriations Act of Fiscal Year 2020, hereby approved on third and final reading." Congratulations each and everyone. One minute suspension.
Majority floor leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we proceed to the next agenda and order of business. We are on the cabinet bill number 50. May we respectfully recognize the proponent MP attorney by the Pacas, Mr. Speaker, for the reading of the committee report.
The deputy chair of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, MP Bites Pacasa is recognized.
As one of the vice chairs of the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management, I am honored to report the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, which recommends for the approval of the 2021 proposed budget with amendments. So, BTA Bill Number 73 entitled an appropriating plans for the operation of the Bangsa Mora government from January 1 to December 31, 2021 and for other purposes. So after a thorough scrutiny on the proposed budget of the different ministries, agencies and offices through the different subcommittees in a subsequent deliberation of the subcommittee reports, the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management submits to the parliament a recommendation that Bill Number 73 be approved subject to amendments as shown in Annex A summarized here under. In full, Bangsa Mora expenditure program 75,628,681,748 pesos and 26 centavos with a modification taken from the fiscal space amounting to 213,458,448 pesos and 25 centavos with a total of 75,628,681,748 pesos and 26 centavos and amendments on the special and general provisions and other amendments under Annex B be adopted with a foregoing a total of 75,628,681,748,026 centavos is hereby recommended for approval to approve BTA Bill Number 73 with amendments as specified therein, respectfully submitted by the chairperson signing on it along with the members of the Committee on Finance, Mr. Speaker. by the chairperson signing on it along with the members of the Committee on Finance, Mr. Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt a committee report number fifty, Mr. Speaker.
There's a move to adopt committee report number, what's number is that?
Fifty.
Sixty?
Fifty, five zero.
Five, uh, fifty is, there is a move to adopt committee report number fifty for deliberation. It's been seconded, there being no objection, the same is hereby adopted for deliberation.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpellation.
The period of interpellation is now open. The lady from Lanau del Sur is recognized, MP, uh, yeah, MP Ana Basman is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for remembering my name. Um, this is not a question but a manifestation that I, we will introduce an amendment to the uh, to the subject bill for the introduction of the parliament's budget. That is all, Mr. Speaker.
Duly noted.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, is there any members of the parliament who would like to interpolate?
Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, may I be clarified on this? I already made arrangement a while ago. The first interpolator would be Amir Mawalil, uh, MP Rasool Ismail, MP Rasool Mitmog, MP Byin Tan, and I think the minority floor leader would like to interpolate. MP Mawalil, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I will not take much of your time. I will just ask around four to five quick questions, Mr. Speaker.
By the way.
Mr. Speaker, uh, there is no arrangement. I can ask anything about the Bangsa-Moro Expenditure Program, am I right? Anything? No arrangement on what agency should come first?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the, there is a specific arrangement of the ministers, offices as reflected in the original as well as in the revised Bangsa-Moro Expenditure Program, Mr. Chair.
Are we going to follow that sequence or can I ask questions randomly?
Uh, if, uh, if the good gentleman from Sulu would like to, uh, propose amendment by rearranging the offices or ministries, then I am open to that, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my first question is about the Bangsa-Moro Human Rights Commission. It has been a year since we passed this landmark legislation, and I am really interested to know on what are the key accomplishments, what are the the, the plans for the succeeding fiscal year? Just a highlight, Mr. uh, speaker, and how much is the, uh, budget that we intend to allocate for them?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, the BHRC is one of the, although one of the newly created offices uh, in twenty-twenty, however, there were issues regarding the appointment of the new employees, so pending or awaiting for the appointment of the head of the Bangsa-Moro Human Rights Commission, employees of that uh, BHRC or RHRC of the Den Araman was extended in a holdover capacity, so there were challenges faced by the BH, uh, by the BHRC, however, uh, there are programs that the Bangsa-Moro Human Rights Commission would like to implement through these appropriations in twenty-twenty-one, Mr. uh, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I am, I would like to know the, uh, cases or complaints lodged in the commission for this year, Mr. Speaker, in considering that there were some, um, killings in the in the, in the region and outside of the, in the nearby towns of the autonomous region, I would like to know if this were, uh, this were filed or this were, these were taken care of by the commission, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, one of the concerns or challenges that was faced by the, uh, BHRC is the existence of the commission proper. Of officials are on hold over capacity, so they were not able to act on a certain complaint as a, as a commission because there are no, uh, only one chair is actually, uh, existing in that commission which, uh, does not create actually a quorum for for it to properly act, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
So there was already an appointment of chairperson?
Uh, I understand that there is already a chairperson appointed, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, but these cases, I assume, were already document, documented by the commission despite the the lack of, uh, of a, uh, of a finalized setup for the commission, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, the complaints were actually opted also by the, uh, uh, employees extended, however, the commission proper was not able to come up with a certain resolution, Mr. Speaker, but at the uh, level of the investigating, uh, personnel of the extended, uh, RHRC or BHRC, they were able to do certain actions, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for that, Mr. Uh, speaker. Sir Speaker, I would like to ask for a detailed documentation.